Alright, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody out to our city council meeting for Wednesday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Uh, we will begin with a review of this evening's agenda. Any items we need to make adjustments to? Alright, so now we'll move on to any future agenda items the council would like to have added.
Um, I think that we, um, there was a resident Chris Martinson requested that that proclamation be added to it as an agenda item. And I'm just asking if the council would be supportive of discussing that. It's the Save City proclamation. He's requested it be discussed.
That's the one that was on abortion, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically.
The Save City proclamation. A save city for the unborn is how the reference reads.
I, I don't have any objections to, uh, discussion of it, but I'm not supportive of us declaring something we don't have any say over. And that, so, I mean, essentially that's it, it's just.
I actually feel like it's not a topic that a local government, again, we have no say over, I actually think it's a topic that, I don't feel comfortable having that discussion myself, nor do I.
So, uh, so what's the, there has to be two people, so what's the concept?
I, I think I'd rather not, but if you really, if you're saying you really want it on there.
Well, I, I just, um, I, I, I don't disagree with the sentiment behind that. I do believe that, um, that it is, um, it's not something we make legislation on, but the only reason I request this because the resident asked for that to be discussed. And I would, you know, maybe we discuss it in a work meeting or whatever it is, but, um, just so that he feels like he was heard, so, but you guys decide. Have, has, have any of you had the opportunity to sit down and chat with him?
Um, so this is, this item right now is actually for just future agenda items, so if we want to have that discussion, that would need to be added on a, on a future agenda. Um, if another member of the council would like to add that, I would direct them to, uh, make that known to the city manager, that can be added to a future agenda.
And then I also, um, think that we need to, and I, I've discussed this, make an add to have, I think we need to, um, keep cranking on the legislative priorities and, um, meetings with our legislators. Even at county level, those kinds of things, I think we need to figure out a way to make sure we're having those, maybe even quarterly, at least, maybe this time with our state and this time with our county every quarter or something like that, but I, I think we have to get that on an agenda so we understand what our legislative priorities are, so we can get attacking that. I'm sure that, that that's being worked on internally, but I, we gotta be brought into the loop on that sooner rather than later, because that's coming up extremely quickly and as we all know that those decisions get made in the interim, not during the session, so.
Yeah, I have, so I'm with that.
That'll be good, because we just all want to make sure that we have the same voice, um, so that they don't get confused with people asking for different things.
Okay, any other future gym items? If not, we'll move on to item two point one, discussion of proposed, of a proposed budget amendment to address project reimbursements. Blake.
Alright, so, sorry for the long staff report.
Oh, I love reading long reports.
So, anyway, this is just eight items that I wanted to roll through and just have discussion on tonight. Things that could potentially be a budget amendment items. So I'll just go through them one by one and, uh, they should go in the same order as the staff report's written. So the first one is reimburse scenic development. This is, uh, the project that is Rockwell Landing. They built some water lines and roads. The water lines have already been reimbursed, but the roads were never included in the budget for reimbursement. The agreement says that they're eligible to receive up to three hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Currently, that development has generated a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars of impact fee for transportation impact fees. And so, this would just be a discussion to add to the budget that amount, a hundred, about a hundred and five thousand to reimburse transportation impact fees for improvements they installed to date. And so the reimbursement agreement says, you know, it, it highlights the collection area of the funds that will be collected, the impact fees will be collected, and it says they'll be reimbursed at a certain date or quarterly if they request them upon approval of verified costs.
Have we received those costs?
Yes. Engineering, that's the, Kim's, the scenics, so you've re-verified those.
Yeah.
So that's item number one, and are there any?
Was the agreement, um, really just, we're gonna wait till you provide us with information on that one?
It's, it's our standard reimbursement agreement form, so that with, those are proposed, the plan, put the budget to it, build it, you know, it's meant for reimbursement.
These are existing, these have already been signed.
That one is existing. I'll, I'll verify if they're existing or not. So the next one is Monarch Village. This is a housing development that's down near RSL. It's actually part of the Wasatch Southwest Development. They have an agreement, they built a hundred and fiftieth South, the section of it that is west of Academy Parkway. I think where that Holiday Oil is, it's just west of there. Their reimbursement agreement says that they're eligible for up to two hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, um, transportation impact fees. That project has generated four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, so it's one of the projects that generates more than what they built. They also had frontage along Academy Parkway that Wasatch built, so Wasatch gets that other piece in their reimbursement.
What was the amount on that again? Up to?
Up to two hundred thousand, three ninety-eight, point oh seven. Seven cents. And then they generated four fifty-nine, one twenty-seven. So that would be one to.
So the system worked the way it was supposed to one time out of fifty?
Fifty.
Two. So, yeah, and that's an existing reimbursement agreement, so that would be one that would be looking, all of these would have to, you know, get approved or you'd have to get the approval tonight to bring it back for an actual formal budget amendment. So, no questions on that. Those are pretty straightforward.
One, one thing I might say on all these, we're giving you a whole list, they probably all can't be funded out of this budget, but we need to, we really should try and do these, knowing all of them, instead of in, you know, discreet in a vacuum making decisions, so. I want to talk, there are probably some others that might be.
That's probably the, the discussion we'll have at the end here is how to run the budget around, so. It's great. The third one is, there was a reimbursement agreement for the Range East LLC. This is a development that was out on, there was actually a range and a range east. They, around seventy-three hundred west and seventy-five thirty west. And they, they put in temporary retention ponds, and then they had to convert them to detention ponds when they put in a storm drain outfall type thing. Houston project, this, this owner went out and acquired some property, and we have an agreement to purchase that property from them for those storm drain lines. And so currently, that section, those lines and that road have private ownership over a piece of it because of this, this hasn't been closed after. So this total is fifty thousand dollars that we owed to the developer. And so those two projects I spoke about generated sixty thousand, eighty-one dollars in storm drainage. So, again, that's an agreement that we'll need to, just to acquire that property.
We already made that decision.
I think we did, but we have to budget for it, so.
Thank you.
And the next one is, this is a reimbursement agreement that's in draft form, so our, is that new policy in place for reimbursement agreements? So our new policy for reimbursement agreements is we will prepare the reimbursement agreement, we'll make exhibits that show the collection area, how much is going to be collected, what the estimate is, so that you'll see that revenue will match expenses, and then those agreements will be brought to council for approval from here on out, so. So you'll see this one coming up, but we'll, we're just talking about the budget because this budget amendment will also have the reimbursement agreement with it as we come in the future. So this is Harriman Seventy-three Partners. This is the storm drain impact fee for the Midas Crossing Commercial, which is the commercial portion of the auto mall and the auto mall. So, in the staff report, this one was a little confusing because the total amount, I just added self-agreements together for the amount, but it's two separate agreements. One is, they had to divert some flows that went from the project from one-twenty-six South down to the pond at Legacy Ranch, the, the pond of one-twenty-six to, um, Legacy Ranch Boulevard. And so that portion of that project is twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars in impact fee that would be, need to be reimbursed because those flows are coming from the town center going down that way. That's not the total of the project cost, but it's our portion, the city's portion. And then the second one is a sixty-inch pipe, so the rest of the water coming out of the town center going that direction. In order to alleviate the pressure on the, the pond of Legacy Ranch, we're gonna run a new pipe going north to Midas Creek down what we're calling Auto Mall Drive or Harriman Auto Mall Drive, through the auto mall. That's a, that's a sixty-inch pipe through the auto mall drive. That's, that's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Amount one more time, one eighty-nine?
One eight-nine, eight eight four, and sixty-three cents.
Close enough.
You added the two together, huh?
Yeah, I added those together, because it'll be one budget for the storm drain.
Yeah.
As those, we're anticipating that as those reimbursement agreements come in, we give each one a PIN number, and so those budgets might be associated with PIN numbers, so we can track them more closely, so they're not just all storm drain. The revenues will have to come in as a lump sum, but the expenditure can be.
What's the nine thousand dollar, the parker fee, what's that?
That's a great question. They only get reimbursed for actual costs, so I, I'd ask Jonathan about that. That's something we'll be editing as we go through that. We just got the draft and put it in. That was the first thing we caught, was you don't get to charge the fees, so. Now, if it's a fee that they have because they had to prepare some closing documents or something, then that, that is reimbursable, design cost or something, but if it's just a fee because they want to add it on, then that.
Still needs to be documented, I agree.
It has to have an invoice from some supplier to them. Great question. Um, continuing on with that same item, uh, this one gets a little complicated, so the only area we anticipated collecting impact fees from on that was the commercial portion, the Midas Crossing, and that would generate forty thousand dollars in impact fees, so it's a little short. But remember, the auto mall piece behind, there's still a pit discussion going on with that. If there's a pit there, we won't collect impact fees, but we could reimburse the city or something for them. They could reimburse themselves with the pit dollars. Or, if the pit doesn't get approved for that area, then that whole area would bring in impact fees and would cover the cost. Number five, this is one that we've had some discussions about. This is probably the, the most complicated one. This is the Ivory Development. These are for the, this is a reimbursement for the roads and the penalties that would be going in for the elementary school.
Why is it titled Parks Reimbursement Agreement rather than Roads Reimbursement?
Uh, there are, there is a Parks one specific. So there's, there's a handful of reimbursement agreements that are part of that Ivory one. There's a trail that they're building. Yeah, so there's a, we'll just go through them one by one. The transportation portion is obviously the road, and that's about one point one seven million. There's a storm drain portion, and, so the transportation only pays from back a curb to back a curb. Everything outside of that sidewalk and whatnot is the developer's responsibility. The storm drain portion, that only pays, the storm drain pays, the developer pays for the first eighteen inches of the storm drain, and then any upsize from eighteen inches, then that's reimbursed, because that becomes like a system improvement for carrying water from different developments and whatnot. So that one's a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars for the storm drain.
Wouldn't we upsize that too?
Um, it's, it's a few pipes, so I think one, I think might have went to a twenty-four and might have a thirty. But it's, I don't think there are any pipes any bigger than, than that to there. Um, the water impact fee, it works a similar way. The, there's a model for the development that shows what size of pipe is needed for that development, and if we made them upsize above that size of that pipe, then the city's responsible to pay for that upsize. And that, that amounts about three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. So, water portion, the park fee, there are some trails that run along these roads, and those trails are impact fee eligible, so seventy-two thousand dollars in park impact fee for that pro, project.
So we're asking them to put the parks in, those trails in, out of state?
Those trails run along the road, and so we're putting those in so that we'll have, it's part of our walk route to the school. As they go through.
Rather than sidewalks.
Yeah, and in front of this, the elementary school, there will be sidewalk, but otherwise, trail is what they're proposing.
And then the last one is general fund, and so we've been, there's been some recent development on this even since this staff report was written. So, we're on the, obligated to install sewer and power and gas to this development. And so I think gas will be handled simply by the, the school when they, when they go to sign up their contract, the gas company will come and install that, so I'm not too worried about the gas. The sewer, when we first got the estimate on it, it was three hundred thousand dollars, I think it was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand and change. And so Jonathan and I met with sewer district engineer this week, earlier this week, and we're gonna have that on a sewer board meeting in, on October twenty-sixth to, and we've extended the sewer into the Olympia Hills project, and so it now becomes a system improvement. And so the sewer district will pay for the sewer, uh, with, with impact fees, so. So that solved that problem there, but we still have the power, and so we, we'll need to budget to install the power up to there, and the way we'll get reimbursed for that, the city would, we would do a pioneering agreement with the power company. Or we'd build it into our reimbursement agreement with Ivory, that when they do a subdivision and they tie into any of that power, they pay their share back to the city to hook into it. So we, we, we might have to put the money out at first, and then we'll get it back over time. The only missing piece that I see on that is the school. Because the school will have a portion, if you, if you divide that power system into, you know, percentages of who uses it, the city won't use any. The developer will use, Peach Pot will use a piece, and then the school will use a piece, and we'll never get that school piece from COOP. Um, unless we do some agreement with the school, that when they build a future school, we can get that back, so.
Kids are gonna potentially build the junior high right next to it, so we could, we could.
Yeah, we just don't know how long.
Right.
So that was the most complicated one. Were there any questions on that? I've been thinking about it for like two weeks straight, so I may have simplified something that wasn't, didn't simplify. Okay, number six is the, the Range East project. Uh, when that project came in, like I said, they did a retention pond, and we took a fee and lieu to landscape it when it was going to be converted to a detention pond. The developer for that project is actually developing a neighboring parcel now and plans to run their stormwater into this pond, and so it needs to be upsized and landscaped still, and upsized for the new project and landscaped just in general. And so they've requested that we refund them forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars that they had paid to the city several years ago. We'd refund them that back, and then they would do their project and landscape the pond, and the city no longer be required to go back and landscape that. That's one of our, um, landscape detention pond issues, so each one's getting solved in a unique way.
This would just be a refund of their fee and lieu though.
Refund of their fee and lieu, and then there'll be, there'll be a requirement of their.
Requirement of the next one.
That project is Outdoor Rich.
What is it?
Outdoor Rich. I don't know if you remember seeing that one come through. I think they had to do a reason. Number seven is the Arts Facility Feasibility Study. Might lean on Jonathan for any description on that, it's.
Yeah, essentially, this is not a rem, I take that, so this.
This is just a budget to do this feasibility.
Correct, yep. And, and so, um, this you'll see twice, um, but this is specific to the arts facility that was anticipated in the Mount Ridge development. I think it's in the staff report, but right now we've procured a consultant, but on hold to execute that agreement, um, until this is completed. I don't know if there's much more at this point.
I think that's what it is. There's, there's an agreement out there, and we just need to execute it. We need the budget before we can execute it.
So it'll come back separately for you, one to decide you want to do it and budget it.
I'll wait, ask my questions on the back, until it comes back.
There's no budget, I'm an option.
And the last one, I'll lean on Chase for this one. This is the Game Point Property Purchase.
Yeah, we'll talk about that tonight in our closed session, in greater detail.
Okay, and so that, that is all the items, um, discussion on.
Well, just, just to say that if we approved everything that was in the transportation impact fee here, you would go negative in that fund by six hundred thousand dollars. And that's counting on what we're expecting to receive this year, okay? So, we gotta be careful there. Also, if you approve everything that's in here for general fund, you would reduce your fund balance by three point one million dollars.
We put this at one percent.
Oh, it would put us about five or six.
Yeah, well.
You said if we approved all the transportation, that put us negative about six hundred?
Okay.
That is if we collect everything we anticipate collecting this year. That's, that's looking forward to what's coming.
So, so one of the things we're trying to do is figure out, all these different agreements we have, becomes the plan to knock them off.
Execute them.
Get, get rid of, you know, pay them off, get rid of them over time, so.
So, as we look at these, I, we're not required to pay them if we don't generate the, or if the process doesn't generate the impact fees accordingly. Am I wrong? Am I incorrect, or how does that work?
So, no, I think you need to be extremely careful at that point in view. You know, you take, uh, just for instance, Main Street from a hundred and twenty-six to a hundred and eighteen, it generated zero impact fees, but you spent three million bucks to build it. There's no, no properties paying impact fees on that property, yes.
So the question was, do we have a legal requirement at that point?
No.
So for your items one and two, I believe you do, because those are executed agreements that have terms and conditions of collection area and time.
It, it's pretty hard to say this development is responsible for this improvement. It's almost impossible.
For, for items four, well, for item four, we, that would, that's a draft agreement, so we, we will reimburse as is generated. Item five, which is the Ivory Homes one, that, that one Ivory has requested that we reimburse upfront because they're building it out of state. So, we would expend impact fees now, but collect them later, so it's just a little backwards on that.
But we, but we signed a letter of intent to do that.
The county or the school district.
We did, we did an MOU, which is expired now. It is, for, for those who are new, but there is still a commitment that the school district's understanding.
So, so just clarifying with you, Mayor, that is that your question? Are we under a le, legal obligation?
That, that's my question, is the le, the legal obligation of, are we on the hook for funds that we haven't generated yet? That's, that's really the question. It's not whether or not we should pay it, it's whether we obligated to pay if we haven't generated those funds through the impact fees yet.
And the answer to that is, it depends upon what the agreement says. If the agreement says, we will pay this out of the impact fees collected from this area, even if that doesn't cover your actual costs, then no, we have no additional obligation.
So do you know on these?
I haven't looked through each one of those. Blake might have the answer off the top of his head, but.
Yeah, the, the probably a mixed bag. Scenic, Monarch, and Range East, well, Scenic and Monarch both have collection areas and say that they'll be reimbursed quarterly as the funds are gen, as they're generated. So, and the only caveat is, we have to verify expenses, which we've done on both those projects.
Up to this point.
So, um, typically that is the term of agreements, is as the funds come in, we'll reimburse them quarterly as they commit. So you're, you're never really overextended. The Ivory one is the one that, is the one that would overextend us.
Yeah.
We, we do have some other ones that float out there that have backstops from the general fund and stuff like that.
So that's, and that's where my question comes, is, is, you know, what are we actually, where, where is the actual obligation? Versus, you know, I'm sure every single one of us would like to make, make every single developer whole, but a lot of these developers, I know we've talked about this in the past, of setting it up so that if it doesn't generate the impact funds, the developer's on the, you know, on the hook for, for completing those, so I want to make sure that we're being consistent in regards to those, you know, as, as we're looking at these.
Our future agreements, we will, but our past agreements, we, yeah, we have in some.
Your, your older agreements are the ones.
I'm just looking for some, some clarity on which ones have exactly.
We, we should have that done.
I have one other question, and maybe, maybe it should have been on the future agenda items, but we talked about, I can't remember which week, about the art funds, and can we utilize some of it to clean up these detention ponds without stormwater money, and it seems like art could, could be applied to those, so it could help make some of them.
Can we list up what we've already submitted?
So we submitted some to the state as well, then, by further grant.
For the, yeah, for the grant reimbursement, and that was the they all are separate because they all had to be entered separately.
Sorry, I didn't make you have to look this up, but it's, it's just a general, it's just a general question.
There were three of them.
No, it's fine. There was, yeah, there was three, and I just want to pull up.
If we could clean up some of those detention ponds that are hanging out there with art funds.
High-speed internet, butterfield, if they weren't.
If you looked at it, it was, I don't know a lot of guidance, so it was kind of like, kind of a re-qualify.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure that in our meetings I heard, I think more like league information and stuff, I heard stormwater was included and that sort of stuff, so.
Stormwater is included.
Yeah, it is included.
So it might be, just even that Range East, anyway, I just, just throwing that out there that it might be.
Just potentially a lower priority.
Right, it depends on where we prioritize, I understand that, but sometimes making good on fee and lieu, I think that may be a huge priority, please, on those things.
Of course, obligations.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry. So, did I grab?
Okay, well, are there, I guess, what's the next step on these ones? Alan, what do you, what do you need?
Well, we'll, we'll need to come back to the formal budget. Yes, we need to.
We'll, we'll work on that internally and bring it back as something, um, what I'd like to be able to do is also give you this, here are all your obligations. So you're, so you're not making these decisions in, in this vacuum of, okay, let's do this, but you've got these three others that also are entitled to some of those ones, so we just need to, we're, that's, that's the process we're working to try to pull all those together.
Yeah, I think that's important. I also think it's, um, you know, for each one of those potential funds that their money's coming out of, we need to understand balance and projected, you know, revenue into that fund for this year, so we can contemplate whether or not.
Yeah, I think a couple of these are obviously fairly straightforward with the amounts owed and how much has been generated. Those are fairly straightforward. The ones that are complicated are the hidden notes, all the costs tied into hidden notes, and then, and then the game point piece, which apparently we'll talk about later.
We will, uh, bring back some additional information plus what our fund balance is, our, what our obligation is.
If we are, just from where I'm sitting, as we look at reimbursing these, um, I'm not comfortable going into the negative unless we are required to by obligation to go into the negative out of these funds to, to pay for these. I'm happy to spend all the money that we collected to, to do this, but, um, I would need some substantial justification as to why we would, would go negative in our funds. Uh, in, in these situations for these agreements.
Yeah, I don't know that you could go negative unless we were transferring funds from another fund.
And so it, to me, that would be the same thing. Transferring out of the general fund would be, would be something that I would want to see very substantial justification for, as opposed to just saying, well, we want to check this one off.
Well, I, I think what you're gonna end up with is a, a list, and it's not gonna be something you finalize in a year. It's gonna, we're have to come up with a plan how we whittle it down over a couple of budget cycles to, to get it back in there.
Do, do you need any further?
Not for now.
With that, we will go on to item two point two, discussion regarding the, a proposed amendment to Harriman City Code, uh, Title Ten, Chapter Twenty-nine, to comply with U T State Code for Single Family Design Studies.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is an item that we have discussed in a joint meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is an item that we have discussed in a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And now we have a formal proposal for you to con- to consider in a future meeting, of course, a regular meeting. So as we all know, the state adopted a, a series of amendments this year that really curbed our ability to regulate design outside of planned developments and master development agreements. Um, and we're responding to those state requirements. We have introduced a series of amendments while maintaining our ability to still regulate design for, um, you know, three and fourplex buildings, um, other structures that the state still does allow for us to, to regulate materials and design. Uh, so we've included these, uh, changes in your packet. Now, this is actually the state code highlighting the types of things that we are, we are not able to, to regulate. We can still require a minimum square footage of a thousand square feet, uh, which our ordinance, our proposed ordinance still does that. We can also prohibit, uh, building materials that have been proven to be harmful or, uh, basically ineffective or, or dangerous. Um, you know, such as, uh, uh, materials that, uh, in the past have been shown to cause cancer, like asbestos, you know, so we could still prohibit things like that. So here's our series of amendments. Um, again, it's except for detached, single-family or two-family dwellings. All of our current standards would still apply for the rest of the types of housing that we do in the city. Uh, and that, under A, this is where we have that, um, e- exception for, uh, material that have been proven to be defective or hazardous. We can, we can still regulate that. The one thing that the Planning Commission was unwilling to change is the ver- repetition of building design. So if you have the exact same building right next door currently, you can't do that. You have to be at least three lots away. Uh, it says not built within three lots or across the street with the same elevation. Now, state code is not specific on that point. It didn't say wholesale, you can't have like a, a provision in your ordinance that would, that would prohibit this. Um, I have asked other cities that they felt like the intent of the state code would still allow us to have this clause. Other cities felt like they weren't willing to, to go there, and they just had similar provisions, they removed it. Our planning commission would like to see if we could still keep it.
It's our recommendation of our attorney.
You can do what you'd like there.
Yeah.
It's a policy decision at that point.
Yeah.
Are we, are, are we? Okay.
So this is, again, this was the draft proposal, so we were having, except for detached, single-family or two-family dwellings, we were gonna maintain that variation, but the Planning Commission did not wanna make that change there in item number G.
Are there any other communities that are keeping it?
Not that I have heard of.
So we would be the only ones?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that when I went to the Utah League of City and Town Training on this, I contacted the presenter who spoke specifically on this issue and asked his opinion, and he was feeling like we would probably be, uh, you know, in a minority, uh, uh, doing that. I felt like this would be pushing the envelope a little bit.
So the recommendation is to delete except for detached, single-family or two-family dwelling?
Yeah, this was our, this was staff's proposal. Planning Commission recommended that we did not do this, that we did not include this exception for single-family.
Is that unanimous among the Planning Commission?
Um, the motion, I can't remember if it was documented in the record. I think it was.
And, and Chase, you're saying, you're saying that if it wasn't clear, we stayed in, in the legislation, that we can make the determination, we don't think we want, unless we see something
Right, it's a policy.
In the next session that says you have to do it this way, we can run with this?
Yeah. It just seems, I don't know, it seems quite prohibitive for them to say, to go quite that far. I mean, obviously, they're pushing it, but.
We've been shocked before.
Have we been shocked before?
Was in California.
But.
It may be an unintended loophole on their part, which they might close in another session, but if they actually closed it, then why would we comply with something that's not required?
They're asking.
Potentially.
I'm fine leaving it for now.
Yeah, okay.
My same recommendation would be to take that off.
So all the other changes are really just consistent with state code.
State code.
Uh, we're recommending that you forward this to a, the next available meeting for action.
Any concerns or questions or feedback other than bring it back?
Doesn't sound like we'd get to have concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
That, that was the one point, was do we wanna allow repetition or still?
I'm so sorry, did you feel that way? Yeah.
No, but I will, I mean, send a, a kudos to the legislature that I don't think it's a bad thing on the one thousand square feet. I grew up in a house that was that small. My first home was eight hundred square feet. I don't think that we have to demand twenty-four hundred square feet on single-family homes. I think it's okay to do that, and I think unless, I, I think that, I hate to have the, the downward push of being told what to do, but, um, I think it may be preempted some, some good policy.
And, and I think, single-family detached cottage type, type development is probably something we, we will see more of, uh, especially as communities remove this restriction, which is pretty common in other cities, so.
Okay, um, if there's no further discussion or direction on this one, uh, we will move on. Uh, to item two point three, discussion regarding a proposed amendment to the Herrmann's, yes.
Yes.
I was like, wait a minute, this is exactly the same. Uh, amendment in the Herrmann City Code, title ten, chapter twenty-nine, to comply with Utah State Code with internal accessory dwelling units. Mike, right?
Okay, so this is another element of the state code, uh, compliance that we're going through. As mentioned, we've also talked about this in a joint work meeting this summer. Um, so as reviewing this, we, we do look at to our, our general plan and our current zoning ordinance for, um, compliance. Um, so again, what the state is requiring is that we must have a code to allow internal accessory dwelling units in any area zone primarily for residential use. Previously, we talked about how our agricultural zones largely have been developed, uh, for agricultural use. So we've included agricultural zones and, and any of our zones, uh, in this, in this, uh, definition. Um, there's some modifications to the definition of a family, uh, so again, our, this amendment before you tonight addresses that issue. It does allow for the prohibition of short-term rentals of less than thirty days. We already had that standard, of course. That's really common in other communities, and so we're maintaining that. We're not making a change in that area. What this does not do is it does not, uh, allow detached accessory dwelling units. Previously to this amendment, we were allowing an internal, uh, apartment or dwelling unit in our agricultural zones, owner occupied, as a conditional use, uh, so we have not been doing detached structures. State code is only internal, which can be attached. It can be an upper level of the home, it can be a basement, it can be over the garage. You can even build in addition to your home and still qualify, as long as it's attached to the single-family home. Now, this garage conversion model right here, you still would have to provide off-street parking. So if you, if a homeowner decides to convert their garage, they've gotta provide that off-street parking somewhere else on their property.
But not necessarily a garage, just off-street parking.
Right.
Off-street park.
The front yard.
Um, so these are the zones where we would, uh, allow this to be permitted. Uh, as you can see, we had it as a conditional in the eight point two-five and eight point five and A-one.
We don't, we're not allowing it in the.
In the FR zone. We had that brief discussion about not having it in the FR zone because we, we think that the areas that are currently developed really residentially, uh, may warrant a, a zoning change to an A-one or an A-zone or an R-zone. That might be more appropriate for those. That way, we don't need to have accessory, uh, apartments in our FR zones, which are really not intended for, you know, residential, single-family development.
Um, as I'm looking at this, sorry, go back to the.
Oh, please.
Go back to the images. So just to make sure I understand, so it would not allow additional front-facing doors with the new, with the new code?
The intent is to try and keep your single-family home looking like a single-family home and not a duplex. And this is also really common in other cities. Even before the state had adopted their ordinance, that was a really common standard in other communities.
The garage one looks like it's an additional front-facing door. Garage conversion one looks like it's a front door.
That, that's true, and these are just generic images, yeah, just trying to identify. That when we've been attached, it can go anywhere within that home. But it would be, uh, you're, you're right, we would seek to have a front door like on the side of that garage if it were converted or something like that.
And this is in single-family attached, correct?
Right, right.
I personally don't have any real issue with ADUs, in all honesty, as long as we address the parking.
Right, so, uh, minimum lot size, six thousand square feet, again, that's per the state. We are proposing that the ADU needs to be directly adjacent to, you know, connected to the living area of the, of the home. We were concerned about having living unit, garage, and then living unit. We thought that that started to look like more of a duplex-type arrangement. So the Planning Commission discussed that with staff, and they seemed to, to agree. That was their recommendation, that we require that the ADU have some direct connection with the rest of the, uh, living unit, living portion.
So what if it's in the basement?
It still is, you know, it's vertical.
It has, you have to have your living room right below the living room.
No, just living area, not, not the living room, per se.
Yeah. Right, right, just the, where the, where you're actually occupying the space.
Right.
Yeah, no garage separating the ADU between the living spaces of the two units. Uh, you could have it over a garage. Uh, we are requiring, again, the owner occupancy. One additional stall for the ADU, again, that's consistent with state code. We will require building code compliance. This is another good thing about ordinances like this. We know that things like this are already happening in our community, but they're happening often without a permit, without an inspection. This program at least allows them to kind of come out of the, come out into the sunshine, go through a permitting process and have an inspection, make sure that it's, it's safe and compliant with, with our building codes. This is a quick model of, uh, where this ordinance could be applied if approved. Um, and just, uh, raw look in our GIS data, we're showing that, uh, we have about six thousand five hundred seventy-nine owner occupied units potentially, uh, that could, could be affected by this, uh, amendment. That's not to say that all of those units meet all of those other criteria, that they have room for off-street parking or, uh, but the, these are, these are units that are, uh, at least six thousand square feet in the city. Um, one other good thing about this program is it does help us to achieve those state mandates for moderate income housing. Um, as you know, we have to report to the state every year, and that report helps maintain our eligibility for transportation funds. And so in adopting this, this ordinance, we can demonstrate to the state that we're maintaining our commitment to provide, um, moderate income housing in our community. Uh, it really is, again, an extension of something we've already been doing as a city. Um, but it does add some additional restrictions, as well as expanding into additional zones, specifically the residential zones, the R-zones. Um, this, this slide that we talked about with the Planning Commission is, again, making sure that that front door is on the side or rear of the home to maintain that single-family appearance. So our recommendation is that that, oh, apologize, it looks like this did not copy through, that we forward this to a future council agenda item for action.
Any questions, uh, comments, any concerns? Do you wanna have it brought to another reading for action? Okay, sounds like we are gonna give direction to bring it to another meeting.
I think the only thing that we did a little bit different from the state was that idea of hav- having the residential main home and the ADU share at least some common wall or a connection. Again, we were trying to avoid creating a, a structure that looked like a duplex.
Good policy.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we will move on to two point four, discussion of a proposed amendment to the Herrmann City zoning map for plus or minus nine hundred and thirty-nine point three acres of property located approximately at one two six zero zero south, six eight zero zero west, from the PC planned community zone to the MPC large project master planned community zone for Limpeland LLC. I saw you today, Michael.
Well, and, and Steve challenged us to be, to be brief and to the point, so I'm trying to do so.
Okay.
Um, this zoning map amendment needed to occur following the council's adoption of the new tool that we're actually potentially applying here, subject to the annexation decision. Um, so once you adopted that new ordinance, uh, we went back to the Planning Commission and held a public hearing and, and received a recommendation, uh, for this zoning change. You're familiar with this timeline. You've been working on this project very well, uh, beginning in, in April. Um, we've had a number of internal meetings, uh, you know, working through the, the master development agreement, which, again, becomes the sub-zone for this property if it's approved. Uh, the MPC is the generic term that is used, but then every area within the city that has the MPC applied has a specific tool or sub-zone that's applied to it uniquely. So that, of course, that's what we've been working on, is what does that sub-zone look like? What are the regulations associated with it? So at this point in time, we've gone through the Planning Commission on all elements of this project. And as you know, these are before you, uh, tonight and potentially next week in a, in a special meeting, um, for consideration and action. We've had a number of meetings with the Planning Commission over time. And also a number of outreach efforts we've done here at our own park. And as you know, we've also held, uh, two joint community meetings, uh, here at City Hall, answering the public's questions on, on this project. You're familiar with the location of the, of the potential annexation and where this, uh, MPC zone would be applied, the sub-zone? This is our current general plan. Uh, we had anticipated having a variety of uses in this area. And then, of course, the plan, uh, our amended plan, there was direction from the City Council to go ahead and identify this future annexation area with some type of a planned community designation. This is a draft plan that's been forwarded to you from the Planning Commission, which, as you know, we will be looking at more closely, uh, over the next couple of months. This is the, uh, plan that was adopted by the Solly County, uh, for the six thousand three hundred thirty residential units. And then we included a series of exhibits that you've been seeing. Uh, these were submitted by the applicant. So I don't know if you have any particular discussion about these exhibits tonight, but they're all here in the slides for your reference. One thing I did want to point out is the annexation boundary includes, uh, a roadway um, of about six acres, like, that is, that road in the bottom left hand, right here. So that's why you see in some of our documents, it says nine hundred and thirty-three acres, 'cause that's the developable land essentially that is either yet to be dedicated roads or private roads. Uh, but this piece of, of, uh, kind of a historic right-of-way, right?
Herrmann Highway.
Yeah, Herrmann Highway. So the annexation petition includes all of this area, including these pieces. Uh, and this is that number from that legal description right here, uh, that was submitted by the applicant on this request. So again, we received a, um, a six zero recommendation from our Planning Commission. We had a couple of Planning Commissioners missing from the meeting that night, uh, but they did forward that to you. Now, this would be part of the annexation ordinance.
Yeah, so procedurally, how this works is this wouldn't be a separate approval item. The zoning for this particular project is included and formalized within the development agreement. And that's also consistent spelled out with the zoning tool that you recently adopted for large project master planned communities. So if you were to adopt the development agreement, that would also adopt the zoning, the permitted conditional accessory uses in there and, and the certain land uses within that project, and would then apply them to the land.
and, and the certain land uses within that project and would then apply them to the land in connection with the approval of that development agreement.
So they were kind of like catching this piece up to.
So, yeah. My, so Michael's presentation is just an update of what happened at the planning commission. It wouldn't come as, again, as a separate item, it would just be included with your consideration of the development agreement for that project.
Questions, concerns, discussion?
I'm, I'm not sure we know what to do with ourselves at this point. Um, if we have no further items, um, then I will accept a motion to, uh, recess our work meeting.
So move.
Just a quick procedural question. Is there anything that would prohibit us from taking care of our closed session?
Uh, well, even though it wasn't, uh, noticed until later, can we do our closed session now?
You call it.
I can make a motion to reorder the agenda.
Motion to.
Okay, I would.
Do we have enough? I guess the second question is, is do we have enough time to take care of that before?
Yep.
Yeah.
That would be a beautiful thing. Okay, so I would be open to a motion to rea- uh, reorder our agenda.
I would make a motion to reorder our agenda to move our, uh, proposed closed session up to now.
Okay.
Uh, Paul, uh, is that a roll call or just all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I would accept a motion on closed session.
I will make a motion to temporarily recess our city council work meeting to convene a closed session for the purposes discussed pending a reasonable and imminent litigation in the purchase and sale of leased real property as provided by Utah Code designated fifty-two dash four dash two oh five.
Second.
Motion is second, Clint?
Yes.
Jared? Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
How about, yes, the motion passes. Who need, uh, thank you for the public, uh, wait outside, uh, who do staff needs to say?